Please rise. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks?
Good evening, and happy new year.
Mr. Montero?
Ms. Murray?
Ms. Page?
President.
Ms. Queen?
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Valentine?
Mr. Wallace?
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Thornton?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Tate. I'm very excited and pleased to announce officially that our county executive has accepted, you've read it before, but I need to officially announce it, that the county executive has officially accepted the Board of Education's recommendation that Mr. Edward Burrows III be appointed as our Vice Chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Congratulations to you, Mr. Vice Chair, and I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure our board colleagues do also. Dr. Golson, welcome to you and your team, and thank you for what you and your staff are doing and have done since the last time that we met, so thank you all very much. I always like to single out and thank our board staff for the work that you do in preparations for these meetings. We don't take that for granted, so thank you all so much. I need the public to hear us say that. Thank you all very much. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda that will guide this work session. It's been properly moved and seconded that the agenda is just before you be adopted. Any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Colleagues, I'd like to now ask you to consider and offer a motion to approve our minutes from our last board meeting, which was November 27th. A motion is in order to approve the minutes from our November 27th board meeting. It's been properly moved that the minutes for the November 27th board meeting be approved. Any modifications, changes, or concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Colleagues, I'd like to now ask you to consider and offer a motion to approve our minutes from our last board meeting, which was November 27th. A motion is in order to approve the minutes from our November 27th board meeting. It's been properly moved that the minutes for the November 27th board meeting be approved. Any modifications, changes, or concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. We want to now move to, before we go to public comment, I do want to, I don't know that it's been past practice, but I'll discuss it with my board colleagues. We just lost a major member of the education family, Dr. Rita Robinson. What we are and what we've become, mostly the good of what we've become, is attributable to people like Dr. Rita Robinson. So we, Dr. Golson and the board, will make a further statement about that in terms of the significance of this great warrior on behalf of public education. Can I ask for a moment of silence? She was such a special person. Thank you so much. We'll now move to an important part of our agenda, which is comments from the public. I would ask you to be guided by the instructions that were given to you as you signed up. Those instructions are to be limited to the time that's allotted to you, and there'll be a buzzer, if necessary, hopefully there won't be. And I'd like the first individual to please, Ms. Wright is not, okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Milhouse, are you here? Would you please come forward and welcome? Ms. Milhouse is with the Prince George's County Language Immersion Coalition, parent advocate. She's going to talk to us about expansion of language immersion programs in K through 12. Welcome, Ms. Milhouse.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Golson, Dr. Thornton, welcome, and also new members of the board. Welcome, I'm very excited. You haven't seen me yet, but I'm here a lot, and you will hear me and see me a lot. I am a longtime advocate and parent in the school district. My son is a third grader at Felicity Williams Spanish Immersion, and I am delighted and privileged to come before you all once again to talk about, well, actually thanking you for your vision, your dedication, and your continued support to have rigorous programs in the school district, especially the language immersion programs. I'll just really start off in saying that I started doing this about seven years ago, before my child was able to actually enter into the program, and that really shows my commitment to understanding who we are, who we can become, and who we are becoming. It is time that PGCPs outlines a vision for language learning that equips our students to compete in constantly evolving global economy around the world. Our French immersion schools are already graduating globally competent students who are advanced at level proficiency, who have advanced level proficiency in languages. This has given them the economic edge to stand out in a diverse multilingual and multicultural workforce. Students who are enrolled in the Spanish immersion and Chinese immersion programs also deserve the same economic edge provided to the PGCPs students. They also can provide them continued immersion studies throughout middle and high school. At this current time, the program is K through 5 program, and it's a phenomenal program. I hope that you all can take the time to go visit those programs, but what we don't want to happen is it to end at fifth grade. The continuation of the studies is very important. I appreciate the work that Dr. Golson and the board allowed the task force to come together to look into and investigate last year. The program is something that we definitely need to keep in place because the continuation of that study really solidifies that child being bilingual, bilingual literate, as well as bicultural. The request for the PGCPs Board, the PGCPs Board, to approve the recommendations and provide the following: approve a budget that supports the PGCPs language immersion task force recommendations that provide continuity of services through 12th grade for our current elementary students in our language immersion programs that currently only stop at fifth grade. The location for the middle school and high school accommodates the, in the report, their recommendations, and I'm going through the recommendations, the current middle and middle school and high school recommendations that we're requesting is that it's something that's centrally located for the students to get to. The middle school curriculum offers, middle school curriculum that offers multiple pathways to proficiency, to include Spanish language arts courses and content courses. We want them to be able to work to obtain the International Bachelorette Middle School Middle Year Program with the continuation through high school. We're also looking for a program that consolidates all of the language once they enter into high school, that also offers a dual enrollment for graduates for K for 9 through 12, as well as continuation of principals that are really focused and instructional staff that are committed to this. So thank you for the time, thank you for your attention, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the leadership that you're providing in this area. I would ask Ms. Annette Jones to please come forward. Ms. Jones will speak to us regarding an individual teacher concern, is that right?
Yes.
Please.
Good evening, everyone, especially to our returning board members and to the new board members who are on board now. Good evening, and I hope that we have a blessed and fantastic year. Yes, so, there are a few concerns I would like to bring to your attention as a board. The first is regarding technology. Recently, many of our teachers, as an advocate for teachers, came to me and told me that they have been experiencing some automatic shutdown of instructional sites, even the sites that are linked to the curriculum framework, they were unable to access because of the restrictions that were placed on them. Now, our question is, they wanted to know, why is it some teachers were locked out of Google, probably YouTube? And these are sites from time to time the teachers use to enhance their lessons and to motivate their students and to bring that level of creativity into their teaching. So why is it being restricted? So, we want you to help us to understand the issue as we eager want to engage our students to purposeful learning. In addition to that, with the technology, the new Mac computers, they do not have the added feature of CDs. These are also features that we use in our lessons, and it helps to create that level of anticipation too, eager to learn. So we really want to know, why is it hindering us to do the job that we so well set out to do? Also, I would like you, Dr. Golson, to revisit and update us on the middle and high school three grades per week policy. We are thankful for the quick steps that you took to rescind the policy for the elementary. So based on feedback, the middle and high school are breaking at their wits, and they are saying they see red. Because, for example, one teacher who teaches reading and social studies, she's drowning with papers, three math classes and three social studies classes, 40 students. Let's do the math. So you see where I'm going with that? Forty times three in reading. More so, grading essay, as you know, is not a two-minute exercise. We are asking you then to speedily reduce this extra workload and bring back that degree of normalcy to our teachers so that they can do the best that they can. Don't add to the workload, just make it normal so that they do the excellent job that they want to do. Also, another concern I want to bring.
Finish your sentence.
Yeah, first your teachers, where are they leaving? I'm recommending that you do not ghost them with SLO evaluation and assign them mandatory mentorship for a year.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
So that they can do the best they can and do not leave our county.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Would Ms. Latasha Frank Harrison please come forward? Ms. Harrison does not appear to be here. Would Ms. Lynette Stevens please come forward? If Ms. Stevens is not here, I'll ask our final speaker, Ms. Teresa Dudley, to please come forward. Ms. Dudley, who's the president of the Prince George's County Education Association?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and as this is the first meeting that I've had the opportunity to salute you, I am honored and very proud of the fact that you have been appointed to be the chair of this school board, and I look forward to your wisdom and your guidance as we continue to move forward as a body. So I'd want to make sure that I say that for the record.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, and I am the president of Prince George's County Educators Association. I also would like to greet our new board members and let you know that I will be in touch with you very shortly so that we can have some real conversations about where we need to go as far as the needs of our certified staff is concerned. It's been a very troubling time for us over the past several years, so we want to make sure that we are all sailing on this ship in the right direction together. As we ponder the budget, and I'm sure that's what we've been talking about, we're going to be talking about a lot, there are some significant things that we need to address. One is the retention of our educators. We've lost so many teachers over the past several years, especially our mid-career teachers that can move to a surrounding jurisdiction and increase their salary by double-digit numbers. We need to make sure that we retain those teachers, not only in our great programs, but where some of our schools are struggling. So we need to make sure that the resources are there. We need to make sure that we look at our community schools, and I want to thank the Community Schools Committee for electing me to be the co-chair of the committee with Dr. Tally, because it's important for us to make sure that we have best practices in place so that when they start to try to attach Title I resources to specific programs like vouchers and an expansion of charters, that we are ready with a program that will work. And community schools is a best practice that is working across the country, including in that we need to expand our restorative practices to make sure that our students and our, are able to deal with the harm that they create with their negative behavior, and that our staff knows how to deal with the harm that they create with some of the negative behavior. It goes all ways, and we've seen that recently. And lastly, I just want to say that the most important thing is for us to work together in tandem, the unions, labor unions, the elected school board, along with our senate and our Maryland delegation and the county council, and that we come together to come up with a plan on where we want this system to go in the next 10, 15, and 20 years, as opposed to just trying to piecemeal stuff together and make it happen. Let's make everybody accountable, and I am so happy that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, for your service also. Colleagues, we will now, we've exhausted our speakers list, and we'll now turn to the first discussion item. I'll turn to Dr. Golson to lead us in that discussion. Dr. Golson?
Thank you. Good afternoon and Happy New Year to everyone. Item 4.1 will consist of an overview of fiscal year 2020, initial IAC authorizations. Mr. Barry Stanton, Chief Operating Officer, and his team will provide an overview of this item.
Good evening, board members.
Evening.
I'm going to have Sean Matlock, our Director of the Department of Capitol Programs, and Ms. Elizabeth Chason, our Officer for Capitol Programs, provide the overview this evening.
Sean?
Good evening, board. We are, I'm going to have Ms. Chason start with the, we have two presentations. She'll start with the one on our submission. As you know, there's an annual submission to the IAC of our CIP budget, and that's the inter-agency commission, and they've changed the method that they do things this year a little bit from previous years, and I'll have Ms. Chason giving an update on where we are as far as their authorization.
Good evening, members of the board, especially new members. Welcome. So we're going to start with our state request for modernization funding this year, and we'll keep this brief. For the, for the most part, the board basically approved this in September, and then it went to the state and the county for their review in October. It's been going through the state approval process, and we're now at 75% approval of funding, so we wanted to update you on where we are. We did very well this year. Most of our projects have been approved for funding, and you can see here that we asked for funding for William Word, New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, New Adelphi Area Middle School, William Schmidt, and then New International High School, and that was all the funding that we asked for from the state. I'm sorry, we didn't ask for International High School from the state. So we're going to focus on the state funding today. We also asked for money for Cherokee Lane Elementary School Modernization and Replacement. This is a new pilot program that we're looking at. It's based on legislation that Senator Rosa Pepp had put forth and was passed. We're eligible for a larger percentage of state funding if we are able to lower the amount that a school costs, and so this is our pilot to do that. So these are some of the state systemic projects. We have very few this year. We have three of them at James Madison, Tuxen, and Chilum Elementary School, which is actually a pod conversion, and then we asked for the usual board-funded reimbursement requests for our schools that we built and still have outstanding funding from the state left. So our authorizations, William Word Middle School was approved, New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, and Cherokee Lane Elementary School was conditionally approved, so we're pretty excited about that. They are still creating the rules and regulations for this pilot program, so we're working with them on that. So at this point, it looks very good, the path forward, but because it's new, they've given us a conditional approval of, we need to have the shovel in the ground, as they say, by October of this year. So we will quickly move through the process of designing and permitting this building and being ready to dig in October. We also got all three systemic projects approved. We didn't get the planning for Suitland High School and International High School approved. The design for that is still a little further behind William Word and Glen Ridge, but we are moving on both of those projects, and the county approvals are yet to be. So this is a snapshot of the state authorizations, and in May, when we get to 100% approval, we will not only have the 13 million, and I have to say that this is an update, as of December 31st, after the IAC meeting on the 13th, it was published that we're up to 13 million in funding, new authorization. So it's better than the 11.25 from previous. We are expecting 12.5 million in EGRC funding or enrollment growth in relocatable classroom funding, because we are one of the counties that has a lot of relocatables that were eligible for extra funding, and we also have some contingency funding. We're hoping that this will basically allow us to get to the 42 million that were projected. We appealed on December 13th for more funding for New Glen Ridge Area and Cherokee Lane. We understood the conditional approval, but it was a low amount of money, and we wanted just to make sure that we made it clear that we were looking for the full amount. So, as I said, in conclusion, as of the 31st of December, our approval is very good, the amount 75%, and we are scheduled to get additional funding as the months pass, and we have 100% approval in May. Are there any questions?
Dr. Golson, please. Any comments before we move to board comments?
No, I just, I just want to add one statement. I have the privilege of presenting on December 13th our request for additional funding, but just wanted to note that we appreciated the work of the IAC to be able to initially approve 70% of our projects, which they typically do not do, and so I wanted to acknowledge the work that they've done thus far.
Thank you. We need to say how much we appreciate the work that you all do. I know from experience how difficult this is, so, Dr. Golson and to the team, thank you all for this. Ms. Ahmed, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's nice to see you, Mr. Matlock, Ms. Chason, Mr. Stanton, and thank you, Ms. Chason and Mr. Stanton, and Mr. Matlock for this presentation. I just had a couple of questions. You said that about we were approved for 75% of the funding? I'm wondering, of that 75%, how much have we utilized?
We haven't utilized any of it yet. We're waiting for 100% to be approved in May, and then July 1st, all funding will be available.
Okay, so then for the previous year's funds that we now have access to and that we're using, how much of those funds have we used?
We have a quarterly report coming out, and it should be in that, but I don't have that off the top of my head. I am sorry.
The reason I ask is because I want to be sure that we're using all the available funds that we have, and I don't want to be put in a position where we were approved for funds and you all went through this entire process, and we're not able to, to access them or make sure that they're going towards the projects that we so desperately need. So I would think it would be really helpful to get those numbers from the quarterly report as a follow-up item. The other thing is, on page four, you talked about a couple of the products that have not been approved, and you said it's because the designs were behind, and so I'm wondering, why is that the case? Was there no feasibility study to help ease into the design? What is the backlog there?
So Suitland High School currently has Cox Gray and SPAC architects working on their feasibility study, and that will be presented to you in February. So they haven't started design yet, and right now we've only hired them to do the feasibility study, and we will go into design if we are satisfied with their work, so we'll see what you have to say in February. International High School, it was on track with Glen Ridge Middle School and William Word Middle School, but it started to fall slightly behind, and we had a very tight deadline this fall. We had to have our schematic designs ready by November 1st in order to be eligible for the first round of funding, and we had to have our design development drawings, I'm sorry, we had to have schematic design by September 1st, and our design development drawings ready by November 1st, and we didn't quite make the November 1st deadline for International High School. So we're still working on that project, and it has an opportunity to catch up.
Okay, and then, if you, if we go to page two, I'm still a little confused. Could you please advise on why Suitland High School is higher in priority than the three Northern Area High Schools when we know that there's a very large overcrowding issue in the north?
Well, that is the way that it was approved in the FY17, fiscal year 17 Educational Facility Master Plan. So we are right now staying with that schedule until told.
Okay, it's just, I, I think the next presentation will have the chart up, but when I was looking at the cycles, it looked like Suitland and one of the new high schools was on the same level for the same year, and, I don't know, it's just, it's interesting for me to see this and the way that it's aligned, and I, I wonder what else we can do to make sure that we're addressing some of our immediate needs when it comes to development of buildings. P3 will discuss that, I'm sure.
Yes, I was going to say, Mr. Matlock will cover that soon.
But I just wanted to make that point, that it seems odd for me to see that we have a specific, very dire need, and we're not addressing it as immediately as we should or could. And one last thing.
Please.
I know in August of every year, we usually have a CIP update. We haven't had one for the past two years, and I would love for that to come back. We usually have, and the reason I mention it is because it's usually on our board calendar that we have a meeting, a presentation from the CIP team in August. It's been canceled the past, we did?
Yeah.
And I was there too, wasn't I? Ms. Queen, you were there? Okay, well, thank you for doing that, and please continue.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Williams, please.
Good evening. I just had a couple of questions, and it's just a process issue that I want clarity on. You mentioned that as a result of this approval, we need to have shoveling ground by October for William Word and New Glen Ridge. Is that what you were saying?
No, we need shovel in the ground for Cherokee Lane Elementary School.
For Cherokee Lane.
Because it's a pilot program.
Okay, okay, because I was just wondering how we're going to get there with designing. Okay, so then that clarifies my question about that Cherokee Lane. I'm excited about this new pilot program with the request that Senator Rosa Pepp has on making our schools more economically friendly, and reduce the price a little. I think that's great. Can you, you mentioned quickly, and I tried to take a note, what EGRC stands for?
It's actually EGRC.
EGRC, okay.
Enrollment Growth and Relocatable Classrooms.
Okay.
So there are temporaries.
Are temporaries, and can you, do you know off the top of your head, how many we have? And if you don't know the number, compared to other jurisdictions in the state?
Oh, we have over 400. Oh, we have over 400.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number at this time.
Over 400.
And we would have to get back to you on, you know, comparison with other counties.
I thought that we have this high number because of the age of our schools and the size of our population in meeting the, getting into the schools, we have the overcrowding.
Definitely due to overcrowding, particularly in the northern part of the county. And many of the jurisdictions are facing the same thing. You know, we have rises and falls in student population, and we are on the rise.
And can you discuss just briefly about the priority order that was given that created our Educational Facilities Master Plan? I know we've gone through several times, we've gone through the Parsons Report this for schools, and then we did another one to update that. And can you explain how we got from there to having this order?
All right, so we used to rely heavily on the Parsons Report. And the last time that was revised was in 2012. We hired a consultant firm to help us with the Master Plan Support Project to help us prioritize all of our projects over a 20-year period. And that took place in 2015, and the study was not approved by the Board of Education. Instead, we brought to you the next submission of the Educational Facility Master Plan for fiscal year '17. And we took most of the recommendations from the MPSP, Master Plan Support Project, and put them in the EFMP, Educational Facility Master Plan. But there were some small changes. Many of them were related to consolidations, because we heard loud and clear from everyone on that. So those are in Section 4 of the Facility Master Plan, and it is on the website. And on page 4-18 through, I think, 21, they're broken out into cycles. Each cycle is about six years. So you can see that they go Cycle 1 through, actually, all the way to Cycle 4, which are the newest schools. And so it was meant to show that over an 18- to 20-year period, what could we accomplish? And then Cycle 4 would be the remaining schools that we would then have to evaluate and come up with the schedule for repair 20 years. So that's the priority order, and Cycle 1 actually spells out the schools by fiscal year. But when we got to Cycle 2, we didn't follow the consultant's plan of by fiscal year, because we thought it was too far out to stick to that. Instead, we left them in the groupings of Cycle 2 schools and Cycle 3. So when you hear us say that, that's what we're referring to.
So this, there has been an evolution of prioritizing the schools based on a physical evaluation. We broke those down into groupings, and then we're moving those groupings forward. Once we get from, once we complete one grouping, will there be an opportunity to reconsider what happens in the next phase based on what we're...
Right, that's what we're discussing now.
But for this one phase, we're looking to keep the Group 1 priorities.
We're trying to stick to the schedule, because we said that the first group had this particular order. It was based on condition, educational adequacy, and utilization. And most of that hasn't changed much in the last two years. By the time we finish this grouping, condition should have changed on some of the Cycle 2 schools, and it would be time for reevaluating.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Murray?
Good evening. Ms. Chason, my first question's about Sutland. Could you explain, looking at that 15 million higher CIP funding, what occurs when, like you said, we're still waiting on back on the feasibility study? So does that money just sit in a pot until it's one day utilized, or did you go into that?
In a sense, it does. There's a whole formula for bond funding with the county, so it's not necessarily sitting in a savings account, the way your money might be. They basically issue bonds as we, before we spend money. And so they can see the projection that we haven't spent it yet, and they haven't necessarily issued the bonds, but we would have to check.
Gotcha. Thanks for that. I want to transition into talking about High Point High School. I want to first thank Dr. Goldson for the million-dollar county requests in funding to start the process of rebuilding High Point High School. Colleagues that have been with me here for a few years know that this is a top priority of mine, and one that I think it should be for the entire county. High Point High School is one of the oldest schools in the county. I would argue one of the most underserved. It was the only Title I high school for a long, long time. And I think it's imperative that the board do everything that it can to speed that project up because of how long the construction cycle is. And so I wanted to ask Dr. Goldson, administration, would it be possible to allocate $100,000 for a feasibility study and to forward fund it, add this money for next year into this year to conduct a feasibility study before the school year is out?
Good evening. Actually, I would need to work with our team to really determine if we had funding in order to support such a request in light, and then have a conversation also with our partners at the county council level to ensure that they were on par with our requests and would be able to at least substantially meet our request minimally of half. I would love for them to be able to support 100% of that request. So let me work with our team and then get back with you at the next board meeting, which is January 24th. Publicly, January 24th. I'll be able to provide a response before then through our regular chain of command.
Great. I would greatly appreciate that. I think it'd be an amazing first step, getting this ball rolling for High Point and something that the Beltful community would be really appreciative of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Vice Chair Burris?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anything I can do to support you in that, please let me know. My question is for the staff. When it comes to the deadlines, you mentioned that we missed one of the deadlines recently associated with the project. Could you talk more about that?
We had several projects running at the same time. We had different architects for each project. It's a working relationship. The architect was working with the project planning committee and staff, and sometimes it progresses rapidly, other times people have a lot of questions and it slows the process down. We're working with the committee and the community, and so it doesn't always stay exactly on track.
What are the consequences for missing deadlines?
They are that when we get to December and the inter-agency committee is ready to give their 75% funding recommendations, they will hold back on ones that have missed deadlines. It doesn't mean that they're not eligible permanently for the year. It just means that they've missed the first round.
Right. And so I guess as a board, you know, we need to figure out what mechanism we need to put in place so that we're not missing those deadlines. And at the very least, Dr. Goldson, I would like the board to be notified whenever a deadline is missed, because if we are not getting that 75% funding when we could get it, we're delaying projects. And so it could be the case that we need to review your budget to make sure that you have the staff that you need, or it could be that the board just needs to emphasize timeliness of that department.
Thank you for that request, and let me just take this opportunity to reiterate that in my role as CEO, I do monitor the work of our CIP staff, and I look at areas of which they're able to meet those deadlines and not. I most recently met with the team, I want to say in November, to talk about the actual structure of CIP and have preliminarily approved a reorganization that allows additional positions to be added to CIP that do not hit and affect our operating budget so that the team can be, work more efficiently to ensure that we do not meet future deadlines.
And I would like the board to be notified whenever a deadline is missed.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Queen?
I'm not sure what my question is to you or to Dr. Goldson. One of the things that you did say to Ms. Williams, you were talking about how projects are choosing what you're looking for. But what I look at, when I look at the vision and the mission of Prince George's County Public School, and the fact that we have a lot of schools that really, we need to start looking at whether we are actually following a segregation law and we have equality all across the board and that every child is getting a fair and a quality education, I'm not seeing that in these projects. So I'm trying to figure out, how are these projects being picked? Because I need to make sure that every student in Prince George's County, if we're talking about capital improvement, I know we are so far behind, but I need to make sure that every kid is getting a fair and quality education. And if we only concentrate on a certain area and we're not making sure that segregation and equality is looked where our improvements are done, we're having a problem. And I didn't hear you say that when you were saying how you look for projects.
Basically, what Ms. Chason was saying is, we're basically making a decision about facilities based on condition of the facilities themselves. It's, and we're trying to be as comprehensive as we can. The MSRP was pretty much a dispassionate review of facility condition based on just reviewing those facilities and determining what conditions they're in, and that's basically how we've made the decision. There's really, you know, geography only matters in the face of relationship to adjacency and relieving overcrowding. And that's basically how the decisions were made about the ordering of these facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Okay. Dr. Goldson, any final comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. If we could move colleagues to Item 4.2 on our agenda, Alternative School Construction Financing Overview. Dr. Goldson, please.
Thank you. Item 4.2 will consist of an overview of the Alternative School Construction Financing. Mr. Barry Stanton, Chief Operating Officer, will provide this overview along with Mr. Sean Matlaw.
Thank you again. I'm excited about this overview. I've been here three months, and I've been making this a priority, to look at this particular financing program. So I'm going to now let Mr. Matlaw go over the details of the program and where we are, but I think it's an exciting program right now.
So the alternate, we're going to give you sort of an overview. Let me go here. The first thing we're going to try and cover is give you an idea of how we're planning on delivering Cycle 1 to the school system. Then we would like to talk about, you know, our current school construction challenges, the potential solutions, and how alternative financing works into that whole thing, and then, and how we're, and the plan that we've sort of laid out right now that we're trying to pursue. So initially, we have Cycle 1, which is this set of schools. And as you can see, it was supposed to have started in FY '17. There's been a bit of a slide because of funding and trying to figure out how to reorganize some of these things, but that's generally what the number of the schools and the years that they are, they are in. And there are roughly 37 schools identified, some of which are in the process of being delivered and some of which have been delivered. And if you move on to the next slide, there's, one of the things that we've done is we've shifted the way in which we request funding. So systemic maintenance projects are now going to be county-only funded, and we're going to use state funding for more comprehensive modernization. The 2019 CIP represented the first part of the shift, and we're making an even larger shift in FY 2020. As you noticed, there were only three systemic projects, and that's because of, we want to try and make a more efficient use of our capital funding, trying to use the state money on larger projects that, so that we're more efficiently using that money and our resources. So if you move on to the next thing, so we're going to also use our local funding on our second delivery method, which is called staged renovation. And staged renovations are just that. They're taking a building and renovating it over a number of years. We have basically five types of renovations. That's the healthy buildings, which is basically an envelope project, core enhancements, which are the core parts of the building, and fixing them. And then your future-ready schools, which is the classroom end of it, technology, furniture, FFND, that sort of thing. Then your safe passages to schools, which is dealing with the outside of the buildings, the pathways, parking lots, bus routing, things like that, because it's very important now that we have a lot of parents dropping their students off, that we have different routes for the parents to drop their children off and for buses to drop students off. And then you have your secure facility, facilities entrances, which is your electronic monitoring, basically storefronts and electronically controlled vestibules and things like that, all of which play into the program. And then you have our second part of this, which is to utilize the Alternative School Construction Financing Method, or ACF, and, I'm sorry, didn't move. Which is a change in the way we're structuring our funding. So if you, you look at the, our existing funding, I'm going to go back to the previous slide and give you an idea of what I'm talking about here. If you go back to our previous slide, roughly, when you, when we get our funding, the top, the green part, is funding that we utilize as matching funding for state funds. So the state gives us funds, we have to match those funds. The center part is county funding that we would use for our core enhancements, staged renovations, and things like that. And what we're thinking, and then the bottom part is systemic money that we use for our systemic and administrative expenditures. So when you go to your next slide, what we would think, what we're looking to do is take a portion of the money that the department, our department utilizes for capital expenditures and increasing that from the administrative and systemic and moving that up to the ACF. So it's roughly about $10 million of money that we would be putting in, and then we'd be asking the county to add an additional bit of funding that would roughly come up to about $30 million in annual revenue stream. And we'd use that money to fund an ACF project, or projects, I should say, over roughly about 25 to 30 years. And so, yes, we'd be giving up a little bit of money from us, but we'd also be asking the county to increase their contribution. And then the next is to reduce the overall cost of construction. As you know, we're, part of Senator Rosa Pepp's pilot program is to reduce the overall cost of buildings, that we can do that by 70, by 30%. We've been working on different models to do that. We're also looking at different construction methodologies, like ICF and things of that nature. So we're trying to reduce the overall cost of construction over across the board, not just on the pilot program as well. So in summary, what we're trying to do is we're going to try and shift our systemic projects to county-only funding and utilize the state funding more effectively on less projects, but on larger projects. Use the staged renovations to address Cycle 1 modernization where we have good bones, where the buildings are good, but they need modernization. And then to utilize the P3 to construct the major projects. We don't know how many yet, but we're going to talk about that a little more. And then we want to reduce the overall construction costs. So there are some challenges and drivers of this. One, we have an aging facilities backlog and a lot with deferred maintenance and acute overcrowding that's hampering our ability to deliver on the core mission of education. So the 20-year Educational Facilities Master Plan, approved by FY '17, identified a total capital investment in originally about $8 billion, but we're not going to get $8 billion. That's like $400 million a year, and we're getting roughly around $160 million a year. So it's not coming. And even if you doubled the state commitment, that would only take it up to about 200, which is about half of the 400 million that we've requested. Therefore, PGC is exploring this alternative options to deliver schools and to reduce the lifecycle asset cost. And part of this is utilizing Maryland Educational Article 4126, which has recently been amended to give us some more options. So alternative financing methods that are available under 4126 are like sale-leaseback arrangements, lease-leaseback arrangements, public-private partnerships, performance-based contracting, preference-based arrangements, and design-build arrangements. And so the basic idea is to try to figure out ways to transfer risk and cost burdens from the school system to the party providing the construction services. So what is alternative financing? Alternative financing refers to a range of contractual arrangements between a public agency and a private sector to deliver public infrastructure, facilities, and services. There are a wide variety of alternative financing models, each of which is differentiated by the allocation of rights, risks, and responsibilities between the public and the private and the private entity. And as you can see through this continuum at the bottom, there's one, the low where we spend most of the traditional delivery, where we have most of the risk and to, and the private partner or the private organization has low risk to the complete privatization, which is, I don't want to go that far, but that's where the high end, where we have the least amount of risk and the private partner has the most risk. So the keys to alternative financing are as follows. So the state and county have a limited set of financial resources to develop capital and operational expenditures. We've talked about this. We have roughly a $400 million need, but only $160 million availability. We need to address a growing backlog of deferred maintenance, which is causing our buildings to deteriorate and causing us not to be able to deliver on the educational model. We have intense competition for scarce funding. We have protracted appropriations delays, construction delivery and exponential increase in cost. And there's a lack of funding leads to deferred maintenance, fix and fix and fail approaches are not cost effective for taxpayers. So the key alternative for finance delivery are access to new sources of financing, accelerated delivery of infrastructure, asset lifecycle consideration, operational efficiencies and lifecycle cost savings, budget predictability and risk allocation and incentivized performance. So what we're looking for is a model where we don't have people just delivering something and walking away. We're looking for a model where we're incentivizing the builder to give us a good building that's maintainable and to be responsible for that maintenance over a certain lifecycle so that we know that the building is going to perform as advertised. So challenges go beyond funding. So there's a public confidence gap about our delivery of infrastructure. I'm sorry. Not good at this. There's a limited lifecycle asset consideration, so we're having buildings that are not surviving their intended lifecycle. The county is retaining excess delivery and performance risk, meaning that we hold the most risk as far as the building is concerned. We're responsible after delivery if the building isn't hot or cold. We're responsible if the roof failed. So we want to shift that responsibility a little bit. There's a general lack of incentive for the builders to give us good buildings and excessive regulatory administrative burdens causing unnecessary resources uses, like additional DGS reviews and things like that. So we're trying to get past some of that. And the taxpayers and ratepayers deserve a better deal. They need leverage for alternative finance and delivery modalities, the linking funding to infrastructure delivery and performance and protect the investment by ensuring that lifecycle access assets are maintained. So the benefits and challenges of alternative finance. Alternative finance and delivery structures could be helpful for the following reasons. One, they reduce transfer costs and scheduled risk. They accelerate delivery. They bundle works in phases to capture economy of scale efficiencies and reduce administrative burdens. So instead of just having one procurement, you have a bundle procurement, which allows you to spread the costs and savings over multiple buildings. You eliminate cost delays due to funding shortfalls because there isn't any. You provide budget predictability over the asset lifecycle because you're not dependent on the price of delivery, but on the cost of the payment stream. You potentially reduce the capital and O and M costs. You leverage private capital. PGCPS retains ownership of facilities and continues to exercise governance over school infrastructure. And there's transparency and accountability related to the cost and the performance. And this allows PGC to pay only after completion rather than paying as we go. Challenges to alternative financing is the project still is dependent on public funding. It's not a free bill. Much of the project lifecycle elements are under contract and we're not, not under our direct interest. And long, there's a long-term commitment. It's not a short-term funding commitment. And there are higher private sector costs for financing that you need to be offset. Next slide, please. So there are different contracting modalities for alternative school construction financing, especially around the, what's called, well, they're just different methods. And one of the ones we've looked at is design-build, which is where the, you contract with one entity and they come in, they design and they build it. We would still finance it, we'd still maintain it, we'd still operate it. So they're only designing and building the building. There are some limitations to that because it doesn't necessarily give you all the elements that you're looking for, but it does reduce the time and saves a little bit of money on the construction of the facility. Then you have design-build-finance. And in that case, the private entity takes on the risk of financing. They design it, they build it, they pay for it. We end up paying back money over time based on that modality. But it doesn't guarantee the quality of the construction nor the maintenance and the operation of the building systems. And, and so it's still a build and walk away situation, which may not be the most ideal. Then you have design-build-finance-operate-maintain. And this is pretty much like almost in some forms of privatization of the, of the building itself. Basically, the building is built, this is something you see a lot in Europe, in Canada, where they build the building and you lease it back for like 25 to 30 years. They, they're going to design it, they're going to build it, they're going to finance it, they're going to operate it. There was a model of this that was utilized down in Houston, Texas. So, and we can talk about that a little later. And then there's design-build-finance-maintain. Now, this is where the school system controls a large measure of what's built. The facility gets all of the financial benefit of deferred payment by setting up an availability fee or lease payment structure. The private partner will maintain the building, thus incentivizing both good construction and maintenance practices. And the expected element of this method is that other similar models is a clawback provision. So what you are able to do if the building doesn't function like you want it to, I'll give you an example. Let's say you have a building that's new and it can't be heated properly and you have an issue. I can clawback the payment for that period of time until they fix it. So a law and they're, and they can't recoup that payment. It's ours back forever. But when they miss on performance requirements, we can get that money back. And so that, this model is the one that we envision pursuing. It's one that we're trying, that we're working on, trying to put together. So how would, how does it work? So in a, in a, how do you get the payments made? So in a design-build-finance method, you maintain, you agree to a private investment repaid via an availability payment or lease payment. It's a, an, or it could be quarterly or a monthly payment that's made annual over 30 years. And so it's budget-based. It's paid after the completion of the facility, not while it's being constructed. And it's a long-term payment schedule, locks in the project costs. So you agree upon a fee payment and that fee payment is what you pay. You don't necessarily pay based on the variability of the construction costs. There's a credit rating agency have significant guidance as to the credit impact or availability on the availability payment. And the financing is based on a stream of funding guaranteed, not the asset. So it's not about the value of the assets, it's about the stream of funding. So once we agree on a stream of funding, it doesn't matter how much the asset, if the asset costs more or less, we still pay one fee. We don't have a variety of variable fee. And so the sources would be county allocated funds and funds allocated from our budget as described earlier in my, in the upper part of my presentation. So how would it work for PGCPS, PGCPS? Well, we've already put together a work group made up of the following individuals. That'd be Ms. Galeros, Mr. Turner, Ms. Williams, who's representing the board, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Claggett and Mr. Maddox, Stan Early from OMB, our CEO, Mr. Stanton and myself and Ms. Chason. And what we've been doing, next slide, is we've been working with a, first thing we did was went out and got a partner, basically a consultant. The company's name is Jones Lang LaSalle and they are very well-known in this area and the, in the, in the alternative finance community. And what we're working on right now is to develop a business case and an affordable financial model that would work for us. We're trying to develop the governance structure, present that governance structure in a business case along with the proposed legislation to support the plan upon approval in a two-stage solicitation process to a private partner or group. So basically what we do is after we've developed a business case and it's been approved by both this body and the county council and the county executive's office, then what we would do is then move forward with a solicitation. And it'll be in a two-part solicitation. So there'd be a first qualified solicitation and then a second stage request for a proposal, which then would be to a limited group that was pre-qualified. And then we would negotiate an arrangement with them. The one thing you need to understand about a, an agreement like this is that it's not a one-stop where you just buy the buildings and walk away. It's a long-term relationship. And so you would be working with them as a partner, you'd be dealing on the governance aspects of it. So it's a negotiation of a long-term relationship, not just a build and walk away. So PGC, well, PGCPS will be developing an initial design of the buildings and operation standards for the ACF. So we're not just going to say, build us what you want. We actually have design standards, we're having performance standards, heat, CO2 levels, sunshine, sound quality, all those sorts of things are being built into the design. So if those buildings don't meet those performance requirements, then we would then be deducting payments or they wouldn't meet our, they wouldn't get past the first design phase. We'll participate in the solicitation process, ensure that the preliminary designs meet those standards and PGCS will develop during the solicitation and the selection process. We're required to design features and performance standards of facilities, contractual terms acceptable to PGCPS, alternative techniques, concepts which will reduce the overall project costs, we'll have to approve those in advance, and the evaluation and criteria for the bidders. The designated Department of Capital Program staff will work with selected, the selected private group from design through construction and will act as owner's agent. So we will actively be involved in both the managing of this construction project with designated people who will only be working on these types of projects. That staff will also facilitate external and internal stakeholder engagements. We will be talking to the community as well as to the PGCPS community about how those buildings should be built. Right now, the time, the goal is that to complete the contract with a, with a potential partner by the, by this August and to have construction of a facility by 2022. And as you can see, there's a timeline for that. We are currently actively engaged in working on the business case portion of this right now. And as I said, we've contacted, we're working with Jones Lang LaSalle and they're working with the group to get us through this initial phase. And they've been, we've been working on identifying savings and ways in which we can find the best modality and the best type of school mixes to put in for the, for this, this process. And so I'm open for questions.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, any questions from board members? First, let me say thank you to Board Member Williams for your service on the work group. Any questions from the, let's see, who is that? Ms. Boozer Strother, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Matlock, to you and your team. And I just want to say I've had the privilege of serving on a working group with Mr. Matlock over these last couple of months convened by Senator Rosa Pepp. And your knowledge and your transparency and your guidance and bringing everything down to a really understandable level, I've had the privilege of being in a room with you. This is, I would say if this is the first time I was learning about this, I probably have a lot of questions and want to have some more simple ways to think through it. And I would like to offer to my board colleagues that experience that I've had to have more in-depth conversations or one-on-ones if you, if you just want to take a step back and, and talk more about it because I, I feel like it's incredibly helpful to me. I want to thank you for being available to the Hyattsville community to come and, and help parents and principals and others understand where this is. And I just want to, I want to focus on the maintenance piece and how important that is. We are building buildings and we now have, I know in my district, three buildings that are now between 10 and 20 years old. And I'm hearing as many complaints of service needs, maybe not as many as our 70-year-old buildings in Hyattsville, but I think that, that is such a big piece of this that is so important. And I think this alternative financing model will serve our school system really well. And I, what I really like is that at the end of an agreed-upon term, which I think we're looking at anywhere from 25 to 35 years, we get to decide if that building is good enough for our students and our teachers and educators to work in that building. If there is mold, if there is heating problems, if this building cannot be used, we have, we now have the option. It is not, the risk isn't on us anymore. And I really appreciate that. But thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Mat.
Mr. Matlock, I got some questions for you. So I'm just trying to get it straight. We're, we're looking at DBFM as the preferred option. And so the benefit for us is that we would get money upfront. Is that correct?
Yeah, the benefit is that they're going to pay for it upfront, yes. And that they'll maintain it over 30 years.
Okay. And so the benefit for them is that they get funds on interest?
On, on a stream of revenue, yes.
Okay. So how much more would this cost us in the long term?
The answer to that question is it may not really cost us more in the long term if you think about it the right way. So what you're going to end up doing is the cost of the construction will actually be lower than our normal cost of construction because of the way in which it's being constructed. We're going to build five buildings or seven buildings instead of one. So they're going to use the same types of things by on economy of scale. So that, in Canada, the, the cost was actually 20% lower than their, how they could have built it themselves. And we're not coming for the money upfront. And then there's the deferred maintenance. So what would happen is, a lot of times what we're experiencing is that we're, because of deferred maintenance, we are having systems fail sooner than they normally would. And because they would be maintaining it better, because of the incentives to maintain it better and our ability to clawback funds, we might not have to spend money that we normally might have spent to replace systems or repair systems.
Okay. And then to Ms. Boozer Strother's point, at the end of a specific time period, we can decide, do we want to buy?
Oh no, we'll own it.
We'll own the building?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That, that answers some of my, those points. A couple more points in terms of the work group. When was the work group formed?
I think the legislation, the, the resolution creating it was in May of last year and we started in June.
And then what I don't see, or what I see here is that there is an opportunity or you're going to be looking at getting partners in. My question is, is there a more proactive approach to receiving partners? Only because I think, because it's going to be a long-term commitment, we have to be very sure that the partner that we pick is going to be a partner that we can work with for a long time. So I'm wondering if there's a proactive approach to that.
Yes, it's going to be a two-step process. So let me just say that right now in the, in the, in the community at large, the people that do these types of transactions, that there's bated breath for this transaction. Everybody's excited about it. It's, everybody's been calling about it. And so there's a lot of excitement in the community about it and I mean internationally. And so we know that we're, there's going to get a lot of participation, but there'll be a two-stage. First thing what we'll do is we will have a qualification, which will get us down to what's considered the top three. And then that, those top three will then present, it takes about a million dollars to put together a proper presentation by them. So we want not, if you have more than three, people don't like to participate in the final phase. So we'll get down to the top three after pre-qualification and then that top three will present their presentation. And it's a negotiated situation. So they're going to come in and give us designs, they're going to come in and give us how they'd like to work together, how their finance group will come in and talk to us. And so it'll take a long time, but before the time we get the documentation out or proposals to when we actually find, about four months before we actually make a final decision. And then that will be a negotiated contract. We'll actually even probably have, so that's kind of generally how we'll select.
So although the work group consists of county, we started in the county council, the vetting process will lie with PGCPS. And the final approval comes from us, but it goes to the county?
Yes.
In that process. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank y'all.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Page.
Good evening, I guess it is now. Thank you guys once again for the presentation. It was very thorough and clear. I just had a few questions, clarification questions. The first being the alternative school, the new alternative school is going to be, I guess, our piloted school to see if the alternative funding process works?
No, the pilot program that we're looking at, the Cherokee Lane Pilot Program. No, the pilot program that we're looking at, the Cherokee Lane Pilot Program, is a different project altogether.
Okay.
That's, that's a pilot for more state funding.
So the alternative, the new alternative school is going to be the first school where we're using the new alternative funding, no?
No, it's just a name. So alternative financing, the ACF alternative financing would be a bundle of schools. It wouldn't just be one. So if you think, we don't know how many yet because you don't have the business case, but we're talking a minimum of five schools.
All right, well, that clarified everything. I just, I really think that this, it sounds really good. So I definitely would like to hear more information about it moving forward because it sounds like a solid plan.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Queen.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I must admit, when I first read this, I was like, alternative school? They trying to build another alternative school for my babies? So when I went down into a little bit more, I understood a little bit more and I was more pleased because I thought you were trying to put the kids in a new alternative school. But as I've been listening to everything, I'm just curious still with the question that he had about the partnership. Because I'm trying to figure out, is it going to be like FedEx, Comcast, Verizon Center sort of partnership? Or is it people like Bill Gates and Lyndon Gates with money? How is that partnership coming in?
Let me give you an example of what happened in Houston. That's probably the best example I can use. The Houston Authority down there wanted to build two massive high schools, way bigger than anything we'd ever built. These things were like 400 and some thousand, 400 and some thousand students or something like that. Huge. Yeah, square feet. Huge buildings, right? Yeah, huge. Yeah, yeah. Now, it was like, what I meant was like 4,000 students. What I meant was that, right, it's like 4,000 student schools. They're huge. And they went to the community and the community refused the bond offering. So they didn't have the money to build them, but they'd already designed them, they'd already gotten everything organized. So they went to a company that's doing some local work here, Gilbane. They're doing some of the metro work, right? And they do a lot of construction in this area. They're one of the largest school constructors in the country. And so Gilbane said, okay, what we'll do is we'll create a private, a 501(c)(3) entity. And that 501(c)(3) entity was then able to, under federal law, go out and get tax-free bonding on their own. And they went to the private sector and got the tax-free bonding. They then built the buildings, they then leased them. And the lease that they did was a non-recourse lease. So basically what happened was, the, and this is just one way of doing it, the lease was related to funding. So if the school system decided not to fund those leases, they could back out of them at any time. But, but basically, at the end of the lease, they promised to do two things. The first thing was they were going to return the building to them with a new lifecycle systems. That means new HVAC systems, new piping, all that stuff was going to be redone at the end of the 20-year period on that lease. The other thing is that it would then be passed on to the school system for a dollar. So basically, the school system would get this new lifecycle-filled system, school at the end of 20 years. And they would have this stream of funding, which then went back to this 501(c)(3), and that 501(c)(3) then dispersed the payments back to those people who financed it. And that's basically how it worked. But while they're in that building, Gilbane, the landlord, has to make sure that the lifecycle systems work. They have to make sure that the building's hot or cold. They do the janitorial work in that building. They, if there's a problem with a broken window, they come and fix it and all that sort of thing. And that's part of the stream of funding that's being created through that lease that makes that work. In this situation, that's kind of what we're thinking of, but it wouldn't be a lease. We just have a relationship with them as a maintenance team. But they would be responsible financially if something were to go wrong, and we could clawback if they didn't fix it in the timeframe established by the contract.
Well, I appreciate the answer to that question because I was comparing it to the lease of a vehicle when you kept saying lease. And I was thinking, you know, the vehicle, they don't do any maintenance on my vehicle. And then at the end, they want me to buy it. So thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just had two questions. You may know I'm the co-chair of the MBE-LBE Advisory Council for the board. And our discussions around, you know, how we ensure that we have adequate representation of minority-based and locally-based enterprises to ensure a lot of the funding that's coming from taxpayers in Prince George's is somehow staying here and creating more jobs. I would imagine that if we're going to go from constructing one school to five, that you would also need a representation on all five in order to meet our MBE-LBE goals. My question to you is, in your research, what have happened in Houston or other places, how are those districts able to ensure that they were meeting their goals, whatever they may have been, when you're going from constructing one school to five and trying to be able to find minority and local-based enterprises in order to do the work?
Well, one, we would require that they have, meet certain MBE requirements. That's not an excuse from the law. So they still have to do it. It's still our money. They still have to have MBE participation. In addition to that, there are some other things that they may be willing to do, like provide apprenticeships and other things. I've had conversations with various groups to find out what's available in the community, what they've done in other places. So there are a lot of different incentives that we can have them build into it that would differentiate the partnerships based upon what they're willing to give us from other partners. So there should be sweeteners that they should give us in order to be selected as our partner.
In your opinion, in your experience, do you think that we currently have the capacity here within our local and minority-based enterprises in Prince George's County to fill a lot of what you're saying we have to do? Or if not, then what can we be doing in the meantime to ensure that we, I mean, I know as a system, we're doing as much as we can, and we have those events that we do, and we try to support smaller enterprises to take on more work and demonstrate the ability to do that work. But what can we be doing in the meantime to ensure that that, those folks are ready to take on the work when that is required?
Well, I know with my experience in the county, the capacity is there. I feel comfortable with that. Obviously, they've got to come with a high level of expertise to perform the service. Let's be real. And so we're just not going to have somebody that does not have the ability to perform. So we want a top-notch school system, we want top-notch buildings, we want high maintenance. So at the end of the day, these companies that already exist here understand, they have to reach out to other companies and be able to perform. And I feel confident, at least from my experience in the county, that whether you have major contractors or subcontractors, they're going to be able to provide the service. So Sean, you can talk about the experience.
Yeah, I mean, there are, we, every project we have has certain MBE goals, and we usually meet them. There's usually not a problem doing that. There's very few projects that we've ever, I don't think I've seen one where there's been a request for waiver since I've been here. So I'm pretty certain we'll be able to meet those goals.
And I understand, in the past, I would imagine that that would be the case, but I think moving forward, when you're trying to, you know, multiply the number of projects you're doing, it'd be a different conversation. We could have that when it takes place. I think there's also the impression that there's a concentration of work within a number of entities here in the county that other smaller, mid-sized ones are interested in getting more. We could talk about that offline as well. I'd definitely invite any of my colleagues to join us in our advisory board meetings to have these conversations. It's not a judgment, it's just sort of, let's prepare for it. A second question is around particularly the maintenance of the schools. You talk about having a sort of a private entity be responsible for maintaining those schools. I guess my question is to folks in the administration who are former school principals, Brother Fossetta, I see you shaking your head. How would this affect folks in the building who are reaching out to someone to fix something in the building? Would they still be tapped into our current process of asking for maintenance? Or would that be, would they be calling someone outside of PGCS to get something maintained in the building? Dr. Goldson as well, as a former school principal?
We'd still have to do that process where they would make the request internally because we have to make sure that we're tracking that they have met their obligation of making that correction in terms of maintenance. Because when they don't, then we have to track why we are withholding funds from them.
Thank you. And if you would, I won't ask you to respond now, but give us a comment on the labor implications of this new approach.
We're talking about-
No, you don't have to. But I just want you to factor that and give the board a briefing about that because the implications could be quite significant. Mr., Ms. Williams?
Thank you. You know, this is my favorite subject. And I'm glad that we are moving forward this way because this is the most efficient and effective way that we can meet that $8 billion is never coming requirement. Before I get into the alternate funding process, I want to talk about the stage renovation. You mentioned all the different menu of options that are given to, that will benefit the schools. Are schools able to benefit from one or more of those options at a time? Or do they just go in for envelope changes or external changes? How are they able to utilize that stage renovation?
Okay, so what we're going to do, and what we're in the process of doing, is we hire an architect, engineering probe company to master plan a building, okay? So we're not going to try every, there's no cookie cutter, right? Every building's a little different. So, and some of them already had had work on them already. So what we're going to do is we're going to basically master plan the school based on its needs, and then, and then we'll adjust because the budget wouldn't allow us to do all envelope projects in the same year because it's too expensive. So we'll adjust them based upon need, and we'll be doing them annually, moving along. So, so one year a school will get an envelope project, another school might get a safe pathways project, another school might get an interior project based upon where they sit. And, but each school will get a project, there's about 11 of them that we're looking at, and they will each get one each year, a new project, until the master plan is complete, and they will fall within one of those five categories.
And so this stage renovation process, it's sort of to help support the school to sustain until they're able to become a part of one of these phases?
No. This is a modernization. So, I mean, to give you, this is not an insignificant amount of money we're spending on these schools. It's a way, it's sort of like a good bones approach, right? So you have some buildings that are complete tear downs because they just can't, can't stand them. Some of them are too small, so they have to be taken down. Some of them are just in too bad a condition. So those buildings that would be replaced or put in an ACF or something like that. But the ones that are doing stage renovations, they're buildings that really aren't bad shape. They were built well, they're on good property, there's no, there's no issues with, like, they're basically good buildings, but they don't meet current standards, right? So they need to be updated. So instead of tearing it down, digging, spending $20 million to dig up the ground and $100 million to replace a school, we're talking about spending maybe, you know, $30 million on a school, only over time. So it might have a $15 million HVAC upgrade with new windows and doors. And then we come back and we redo the gym floors and the air conditioning and fix the cafeterias and put in new equipment in the cafeterias. Then next year, we come back and do the bathrooms and the hallways and get the classrooms updated, get new servers in there, make sure that all the new, all the new educational equipment that normally would be used is there now. And then the next year, we come back and fix up the playgrounds and the outside and paint it. So basically, we spruce it up over time, but by the end, it would have gotten what would have normally been a renovation. But we won't have to swing the school for two years while we do that renovation. Otherwise, you would have a swing, and then that's a lot of disruption, and we're trying to avoid that.
Thank you. Because I was under a different understanding, but that's just because I wasn't clear. But in looking at the public, the alternative school construction funding project, the commitment, we're talking about committing to another entity for a long period of time. And so can you talk about the team, how the team could be comprised? What, who would comprise this team?
Right now, I don't know because the work group hasn't established it. But it would be, someone from the county would have to be involved.
No, 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 I mean, the partner.
Oh, the partner. Okay. So the partner would be, usually have a finance group. It would have a construction group, and usually one that's large enough that can handle this type of work. Because you're talking about multiple buildings at the same time being built simultaneously. And they would have, have to have a maintenance component to them. So you're looking at a large entity. And then there may be a, what I would call a, an equity group. That, so I'm not, we're not expecting that this group is going to get all this money through public financing. We're expecting, and it might be an important piece, that they get some of their funding from equity partner that ties them into the profit and makes it important for them to make sure that the performance happens.
Right. And separately, outside of the ACF, we currently have, it was approved in this administration, the, under President Trump, this opportunity fund. And that brings in money that could possibly work with, with this if some of our schools fall within that opportunity fund area. Are you familiar with that? And are any of our schools that we're looking at for this first phase falling into that category?
I'm not. I'd have to investigate it.
Okay. We can talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Colleagues, we have two more board members wishing to speak, Mr. Burrows and Ms. Page.
Yes, my first question is, what incentive do these partners have to do this if it's going to cost the board less money in the end?
They'll still make a profit. I mean, the problem, the fact of the matter is, it's a profit motive. And what you have to understand is, the way we construct buildings is, the way the public constructs buildings generally, not just the school system, but all schools, all public entities, it's not as cost-effective as a private entity can do it. And also-
Why is that?
Well, yeah, how's the best way to put this? Every project is bid separately, it's performed separately, right? So if I'm going to have five buildings and I'm going to construct them, there's three things you have to understand. First off, I'm not going to be able to build more than three buildings over two years, okay? I just don't get enough money to do it, and I don't have the capacity to do it. So I might be able to build really two buildings every two years, right? And it's really over two years because you don't get all the funding upfront, number one, and number two, it takes longer to do it. I'm going to go out separately and get a separate architect and a separate HVAC expert engineer for that. They're going to have a separate design for this building. The architects are going to come in and give me a separate design for that architect. There's going to be a lot of community engagement. It's going to take time to do all that. Then, once that happens, we then have to go to the IAC. The IAC has to approve it. It takes a while, they might want to send it back. Just because you get it submitted, the first one, the design might not be what you want. So you might have to go back to the architect and say redesign it. The IAC may not approve it, you have to go back to them. Once the IAC approves it, there's like a ton of different requirements that you have to get underneath it. So there's feasibility studies. In order to do a school, I have to do the feasibility study before I can even start planning the school. I have to do the site tests all on my own for that individual spot. There are tons, there's, then MSD-E has to approve the plan. And then DGS has to approve the design before I can even go get permits from DEPI. And then I can't bid it out, really, a large project, I'm not going to bid out until I have DEPI approval, IAC approval at the end. So it's just all these fingers in the pot that drag down the timeline. And then the other thing is, you know, like, so it's, that's one aspect of it. And then you're building an individual school. Everybody's building their own profit into that one school. So the developers, the builders building a profit in, the architects building, all the subs are building their one profit into that one school. And so therefore, that amount goes up. And for us, we have a number, another problem, which is that we're, our payment methodology has been not great. So we end up paying an additional financing fee that the builders are figuring in because they know that it's going to take a long time to get their money over time from us. So as a result, the cost of construction goes up, and, you know, by a magnitude of like 10%. So we're paying all that because the funding is coming from us. So what happens on the other end of this is that when you're doing ACF, they're already getting their money at front. Matter of fact, what's probably going to happen is they're going to probably obtain the stream of funding and sell that stream of funding to somebody else in finances. I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem. And when would the board have to approve if we want to move to this model or not?
The first version, we'd probably be bringing a business case to you sometime in February.
This upcoming February?
This is up next month, yes. We'll be bringing you a business case around February.
Okay, I'm certainly not prepared, February, to vote on this. I would like to know where this has been done across the country, some references-
Sure.
-where this has worked out. I'm also very interested in seeing the community benefit agreements associated with these to ensure that we have apprenticeships and that we have, I want to thank Mr. Valentine for serving on the MBE Advisory Board. I want to make sure that we have a strong MBE language in it so that our residents are not short-changed like they normally are. so that our residents are not short-changed like they normally are throughout the state. And I also want to ensure that we have our labor partners involved. You know, we have so many of the labor union halls in Prince George's County. So I want to make sure that, you know, they play a role in this as well. And so I'd like to see all of these things before we're asked to vote on it. I think, you know, we need a lot more information.
Well, again, we're building a business case, and the business case includes all that information. And that's what we're bringing to you. We're not going to say, go ahead and just do this with just an idea. We're going to bring you a full business case that lays out all these aspects. One of the things I didn't mention earlier is that the military, the US government, the military, they build all their social infrastructure using this methodology. So it's a very proven technology. University of Maryland uses it for their dorms and things like that. A lot of people use it. It's just hasn't been applied to this, in a large portion to secondary and primary schools because it's just getting here. There's another model that was done in Canada where they built 18. Then it worked so well, they built 20 more, and then they built some more because, using this methodology. So we'll be able to bring you a robust picture of what this looks like, and we'll have our representative from Jones Lang with Sal come and give you a full presentation of what we're talking about. And I'm very certain that once you see how robust the picture we're talking about, you'll be convinced that this is a good model.
I appreciate that. I would love to see those references and examples of community benefit agreements throughout the country would be helpful to see so that we know exactly what our options are.
Thank you, colleague. Miss Page, our final speaker. Miss Page.
I'll keep it brief.
Thank you.
So my question is kind of rooted from a little bit of reflecting I was doing throughout the conversation. So I remember visiting Soolan High School, and they, when they heard that they were going to get a new school, the first question that they had, both the teachers and the students, was, hey, what can we do to contribute to the design process? And so I know that when we have certain designs, we do allow the communities to have a very great input on what the design will be because every school is unique and every school has different needs. So I would like to know whether or not that would be impacted because I feel that that is a crucial part of the design process if we do continue on with this partnership.
Again, we will, the preliminary aspects of what we want to build, we'll be presenting. But yes, the community will have some input into the overall output the building actually ends up becoming. And that's why we have internal people working as to reach out to the community and internal stakeholders so that that input is received and put into it. Usually, every building has a planning committee, and that won't change.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know who to ask this question of. I'd go back to the work group composition slide, would you? I guess I'll ask this of my colleague, Miss Williams. Based on your experience, you're comfortable with the composition?
Yes, I'm very comfortable because this is a long-term commitment, and our funding sources come from, the funding sources that we're looking to use come from the county council and the county exec. They have to be on board with this funding source. So they have been a part of this process from the beginning. Their legal group has been involved in it. County council people sit on the committee, so I'm very comfortable with the makeup of this work group.
I just always want to follow my council chair, that's all. So I'll speak to them about that. Okay, this is a robust discussion, and thank you so much. That's an excellent presentation, Dr. Goldson. Thank you for that, and colleagues, your questions. Colleagues, we, any follow-up items from our November 27th board meeting will be on board dot upon receipt. So you can look for that there. I'd like now to ask for a motion to approve actions that we took in executive session just this evening. Second, it's properly moving to second it, that actions that we took in executive session involving labor negotiations, legal matters, internal audit update, personnel appointments, and administrative matters be approved. Those in favor of that, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. I'll now receive a motion to adjourn the meeting. So probably moving to second it, that we adjourn this work session, and those in favor of it, please say aye. Those opposing, no, and the ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Huh? Oh, oh, the photo. The photo, don't go anywhere.